...of the airport to date. If future runways are added, of course, the new users will pay their share of those, will pay for the new runways. But in addition, they need to pay for some of the fixed costs of the initial plan. And there's a lot more than $960,000 in this project that's fixed cost. And it needs to be recovered from future users, not just the initial users. I thank you for your time.
Okay, we have an amendment on the floor. And I'm sure there will be people who would like to speak, both pro and con the amendment. Again, those who are pro the amendment, in favor of the amendment, please use these microphones. And people who are against the amendment, please use those microphones. If you're a board member and you have some comment to make, you know, make it from the middle of the microphone, rather than running all over the auditorium. I would ask you to try very hard to confine your remarks only to the amendment that's on the floor now. Make no comment regarding the entire motion that is now temporarily off the floor. So to the amendment. Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Garrard would have the users of the initial district charged on his formula about $7 million, which is very substantially less than the cost of building the district. His 30 percent formula assumes that the cost of a collection system in another district will be the same as this district.
Do you have a point of order, sir? He's rising to a point of order. Your point of order is what, sir?
Incorrect information.
Well...
Incorrect information of $7 million.
I'll tell you what, I'm not going to, that's really not a point of order.
Okay, fine.
So I'll give you a chance to rebut when he's completed.
Well, if I haven't understood his formula, this shows the problem of mending things on town meeting floor. He's assuming a linear relationship between everything. And if there is an 850,000 gallon per day sewer district, or whatever size it is, that's going to go to the river after watershed trading study, phosphorus studies, and a lot of different treatment opportunities. He says initial users have no benefit of scale. I suggest that they will have every benefit of economies of scale on operation and maintenance, as we've already demonstrated. Basically, the real kicker here is that, as I understand Mr. Garrard's formula, it immediately throws $15.1 million of this project, assuming the full amount is voted, I'm sorry, voted, onto the tax base. And when you figure that out over 20 years, you've just increased the general taxes about $700,000 a year. And I would submit to you that we haven't planned on that in the municipal budget, which I think demonstrates part of the problem with this idea.
Now, do you wish to make a rebutting statement? Go right ahead. Mr. Garrard, go ahead. I'll let you speak once, and then I'll let the gentleman who's at the microphone speak. But please be fairly brief.
Okay, I will be very brief. The figures that are being used, they are wrong. The total cost, as pointed out earlier, of the 850,000 dollar district is about $50 million. Forty to 50 million dollars. If it's 40 million dollars, my formula, 30 percent of 40 million dollars is $12 million. If it was 15 million dollars, 50 million dollars, 30 percent of that formula is $15 million. The figure that's being talked about is $21 million. So the difference, it's the difference between 15 and 21. Not, it's not low. I'm not asking the initial district to only pay some ridiculously small amount of $7 million. Fair share for everyone.
Now, I'll recognize the gentleman who was waiting. Then, Mr. Cadillac.
Ed Fetterman, Drummer Road. I want to just emphasize that many of the leaders of the town, I believe it's Mr. Aronson and Mr. Hunter, are emphasizing the benefits to the town as a whole. The very distinguished board that Mr. Aronson represents voted unanimously in favor of this bylaw, because it serves the town as a whole. Yet the town is asking all the costs to be borne by a very small minority of the town. So I urge you to support this amendment.
I guess it's too late for me to get time to rebut Article 1, the misinformation.
But don't give up. Don't give up.
I haven't so far.
I know you. For 25 years, as far as I know.
See you December 1st. Anyway, to the amendment, the big problem with what the gentleman proposes is the very high unpredictability of construction costs, of any additions to the sewer district. As we found from April 97 till now, when in April 97, we thought $11.5 million was a good solid number. Once we started drilling a few holes in the ground, we found about $1 million worth of ledge, and you heard the rest of it. Therefore, the big problem with the gentleman's proposal, which conceptually makes complete sense, is there is no such thing as a good number for the cost of the 850,000 dollar gallon per day system, even if you assume it's going to happen, which is another if. Therefore, there is really no practical way of putting a dollar amount on how these assessments would work. The municipal budget would have to absorb, I assume, to back up, that the whole purpose of this is to reduce the original upfront betterments to the users in the original district, which I sympathize with. Therefore, if the construction is going to cost $21.5 million, and somehow this number for whatever estimate is used comes out lower, somebody has to pay the difference, which would be the municipal budget. And frankly, that's going to be a problem for the people who will never get to use the district. So as this, with another such similar amendments, although the intent is good, I think it's self-defeating, because you're running the risk of having the whole thing voted down. And for that reason, I am against this amendment.
In favor of the amendment, sir?
Yes, sir.
Yes, go right ahead.
Mike Domenica from Carlton Drive in South Acton. I work in this business and have worked with Woodard and Kern recently. And I'm in the business of drafting intermunicipal agreements and agreements for this type of activity. And the amendment actually is exactly in line with the way this is done in the business. For instance, at Devens now, where I'm drafting an agreement, Devens is investing a large amount of capital and construction costs on a new wastewater treatment plant. They're inviting the town of Shirley to join them, much as our initial sewer district would invite other parts of the town to join the district in future dates. As part of that, Devens is requiring a capital investment of that of Shirley to buy in cost to enter into the district and pay the capital cost to the fixed asset that was in place. That's exactly the right way to do it. If we don't do it that way, we're in big trouble down the road. The fact that we can't see down the road is indication that maybe we need to stop and think some more about this before we go further, anyway. Last point is that it's common practice to develop construction cost estimates for advanced wastewater treatment plants for river discharges through facilities planning efforts. That's not rocket science. It's done every day. Every consultant does it. And we can get a good estimate for future capital costs with which, on which this amendment can be based. Thank you.
Opposed to the amendment, Mr. Katie?
Yes.
Your floor.
Bill Katie, 56 Strawberry Hill Road. I have to rise and say, this is the second time in two years that I agree with Dory Hunter. Your batting average is increasing, you're getting like Sosa, and you're not even in second place, though. The, what they're proposing, I've spent 15 years doing sewer district studies and allocation of costs between customers. It comes down to an issue, there's as many people who can stand and say they're pro or con this issue, there are experts in the field to tell you this, either way, it can be done. This isn't the way to do it. You shouldn't be doing it as an amendment on a town meeting floor. They've already lost to the committees that were established. All the minds that we have have been working on this for the last 14 years, and everybody who's been involved has said, no. And now they're coming to us and saying, we didn't lose, you know, we're Sosa, we're going to change the rules, and we want to be putting the record books, too. You don't come to a town meeting and try to take an issue of this magnitude and try to throw it up as an amendment. It hasn't worked before, it won't work in the future. Let's vote it down.
In favor of the amendment, sir?
I'm Gary Holtman, Drummer Road, Acton. We've been talking about the unknown cost either today and in the future. And I think that's very true. And I think passing this amendment keeps the focus on addressing those cost issues over time, to work on the continuing fairness of it. Not passing it creates no emphasis or so, or no push that I can come up with to expand it or address it. We could easily wind up with a single Phase 1 sewer district, period, because we solved the school problem. So anyway, with, and with the size of this investment, I think we absolutely have to keep the focus on it and the financial management. So I vote, I suggested everyone votes yes on it, to keep that focus.
Mr. Richter?
As a scientist, I don't think there's any reasonable rationality to say that there's a proportionality between the number of gallons per day and, and the cost of the sewer system. I think that's a mistake. And that's one of the main things that's technically incorrect about this amendment. It just is, is not, not good science at all. Thank you.
In favor of the amendment, sir? Go ahead.
I'm Paul Gaber, Ascot Crossing in South Acton. For the people that are on this route, we're looking at $12,000, $11,000 in betterment costs. We're looking at, in the case of me and my neighbors, $10,000, $12,000 in connection costs. It's a substantial investment for many of the people along this route. It's not something we want to take lightly, even if we support the, the whole process here of getting a sewer in town. I support the amendment to make it more logical. I think, contrary to the previous speaker, I believe of the MBTA, charges on a per gallon basis for water consumption, and including sewer, and Boston, and so on. So I don't think it's a very unusual approach. I also want to point out that this go-forward costs are a real important element, because the odds are, without any non-interest bearing loans, we probably never would go forward. So we'd maybe be stuck with this, this short-term thing. And this puts the focus on the rest of the town to, on that extra 600,000 gallons, to think about it. If you don't have that, then us, the people in South Acton, are the ones that are going to be left holding the bag. So I support this and encourage everybody to support this amendment.
I see one, two, three, four, five people standing to speak opposed. I see no one standing to speak in for, well, not quite yet, not quite yet. That one right there is perfect. Stay right there.
I don't know if I'm opposed yet.
No, you stay right there. I'd like to draw the debate to a close on the amendment fairly quickly. So we'll take your question, one more pro and one more con.
Thank you.
Your question, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Sarah Cope, 372 Old Beaver Brook. My question is this: As I listened to Mr. Garrard's amendment, what I understood him to say was that, in the amendment, as well as in the original article, all of the costs would be borne by the users of the district. As I listened to Mr. Hunter, I believe what I understood him to say was that that was not possible, and that because not all of the initial costs would be paid for under this formula, some percentage would be then passed through to the rest of the taxpaying citizens of Acton. I need to understand which one of these statements is correct.
Mr. Hunter?
There is no free lunch. If the users succeed in avoiding some of the costs, there is only one other place, and I'm excluding the 960 we're talking about, for the pipe size that we already recognize, I'm excluding the fact that we're the owners of the schools. But if the rest of that money is not paid for by the people in the district, then the general taxpayers in town, including, if you call my tail, of the three condominiums, including the people in Nagog Woods, who are already paying for 200,000 gallon per day treatment plant, will pay. There isn't anybody else.
Do we know how much that would be, based on the current?
Well, I mean, this is all back-of-the-envelope stuff, because we're straight-line proportioning between a district we don't know about and a district we do. But my back-of-the-envelope is that we're talking about, over 20 years, an impact on the tax rate of about $750,000 per year. Now, mind you, the municipal budget is about $14,000. So we're talking about...
$14 million? $14 million?
$14 million. I wish it was $14,000.
So do we all.
Yes. So, you know, you're talking about something in the order of 3 percent of the municipal budget.
Okay. And does Mr. Garrard concur with that assessment, despite his statement of...
He's shaking his head, and I'm assuming that means he doesn't.
Would it be possible to hear his point of view before I say anything else? Is that not allowed?
No, certainly it's allowed. Mr. Garrard, go ahead. We've already violated the rules of debate enough here tonight. You might as well go crazy.
I'm opposed to any.
Mr. Garrard?
But I will be very quick. The intent, as I made very, very clear, is that that additional money will not be put onto the general taxpayer across the whole town, but will be put onto the future users, the users that will use the system up to 850,000 gallons. Let me just finish. Up to 850,000 gallons per day.
I'm going to let you finish. Don't tell me what to do on my job.
The, sorry, well, up to 850,000 gallons per day. The only way the whole town would pay that money is if the town, for some reason, did not expand the sewer district to 850,000 gallons per day.
Okay, with those two...
Now, I'm going to recognize you for your last shot, ma'am.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
And this will be, and I promise, this will be my last shot. If I listen to both gentlemen, it is now my understanding that there is no way, in this amendment, to assess future costs to future users of an unknown district. I am, I am not opposed to sewers at all. I will state that upfront. I am opposed to any scheme that shifts cost sharing for the system away from the users and toward the general taxpayers of the town. Mr. Hunter is correct. I do live in the village of Nagog Woods. We pay ourselves $410 per unit, per year, already, for operation and maintenance costs for sewers. We have absolutely no interest in paying anything additional. Thank you.
I recognize, I recognize the lady at the front microphone.
Hi, thank you. Sharon Ingram, 6 Puritan Road. My first two items are questions that affect the vote, or at least my vote. One of them is that, the other night, you told us that betterments, once assessed, can't be changed. So for example, if the future users have a lower betterment, we can't all benefit. Is that state law, or how is that determined?
Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, that operation of state law, the betterment once charged, that's it. If the betterment is lower in the next district, that's the way it goes. If the betterment is higher, that's the way it goes. And I suggest that, and I think it's more likely to be higher.
Number two, then, would it be possible at a future town meeting, if, for example, the next users had half the betterment cost, for them to vote that we got relief in the form of reduced fees? Is that a possibility? Would that be within the realm of legal possibilities?
Ten of the, I hate to answer this sort of thing off the top, off the cuff on town meeting floor, it amounts to a legal opinion, but I think the operating expenses could be adjusted. I don't think you'd go back and do anything about the betterment.
Right. Well, that's why I'm asking if there might be some other remedy if there was a big difference between the two.
Yeah, I think that it's possible, at least I can't think, at this moment, as I stand here desperately, running through my metal file cabinet, I can't think of any reason we couldn't do it.
Okay. And then my, my last one, having to do with this amendment, is asking if there are people in the room who were going to vote yes on sewers, who would vote no. I'm just curious, with a roar one way or the other, if you'd be changing to no, if the amendment passed.
I'm not, I'm not willing to ask that.
So, okay.
Nice try, though. I'll recognize, for the last speaker, I hope, the gentleman here at the front microphone.
Malcolm Crongell, 55, Parker Street. A couple of brief comments. First of all, to Mr. Garrard's last comment, I can't see any way, if you're going to take some of these charges out of the initial betterment assessment, and we don't have a new district defined to whom those charges could be allocated, I can't see any alternative but for the town to absorb that, which is exactly what Mr. Hunter and the committees are trying to avoid. The other general comment to the amendment is that, from the estimates we've seen, the betterment charges are going to run in the order of $11,000, $12,000, which, if memory serves me right, is on the low end of what it costs to replace a septic system. The people who are benefiting from this are the people who otherwise are likely to have to replace their septic system, so it doesn't seem all that out of line.
There's only, there's only two people standing. Please don't anybody else get up and go to a microphone, because I won't recognize you. I'll just wind up with these two. Mr. Fetterman, is it? Yes, go ahead.
I would like to just speak to the numbers. The concept matters. The concept has been discussed. The numbers matter, too. Mr. Hunter says that the number is $700,000 to be absorbed. I believe that's not correct, based on Mr. Garrard's proposal. That's assuming, it's not understanding. And Mr. Garrard's proposal, it's 30 percent of $50 million of the cost of the expanded district. That would be about $15 million. That would leave $6 million over 20 years, or $200,000 per year, not $700,000 per year. And I think, you know, these numbers need to be accurately understood, Mr. Garrard's proposal needs to be, and that clarifies it, I believe.
I'll recognize the last speaker, the gentleman at the back.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ed Adelman at Old Stone Brook Road. I stand in opposition to this amendment fundamentally, because it flies entirely in the face of the agreement which we reached last town meeting, where after a full and fair discussion with many public meetings and a significant amount of information provided to all voters, we voted unanimously as a town to have sewers. I'm very, very concerned that we now have something in front of us, that we cannot quantify cost, we don't have the information the Sewer Action Committee provided to us last year, in terms of what it would cost us, and we don't know what we're voting for. And I share the concern mentioned some time ago, that this threatens sewers at all, because I don't know how, I certainly cannot vote favorably towards something that I don't know what I'm voting. So I'd recommend you to vote this amendment down, so we can actually see sewers.
I really would like to vote. I know you're standing there patiently. Do you, let me ask you a question. Do you have something significant and different to add? You do not. Then let's, let's, with your indulgence, let's vote. I think, I don't want to take one more on each side, because we'll keep going on forever. Let's vote on the amendment. Thank you, sir. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
All right, we are back discussing the motion as unamended. Mrs. Mannellin?
Just a question. Given that the next article is to appropriate another $7 million, well, 10? Okay, it's even worse than I thought. Oh, well. One of my concerns, given that this proposal has just been defeated, this amendment, is we have seen 100 percent increase in cost, or we see another 100 percent increase between now and the time we put it in. And if the total betterment is going to the initial users, are you going to sync the users with the betterment costs? And what does it take, I mean, at what, at what point, do we have a cap on this, that we will not spend $250 million on this? Or do we just keep voting incremental amounts until we get this job done?
Mr. Hunter?
I have said publicly twice, I'll make it three times, that I will shoot George Bloom from Woodard and Kern if he comes back and asks for a penny more. There are a number of reasons why the price has gone up. The money that will be voted has a 25 percent contingency, and we're confident the project can be built within that. And I would oppose, I will not only not present, I would oppose any increase in the cost. We're at the point where we're simply, if we run into a completely unanticipated problem, and who knows, I mean, the Mars might drop on us tomorrow, we'll engineer around it. I think we're committing to you that we will not increase this. Recognize that the big increase, well, first off, you have to break it down, $3 millions for an expansion, so you really can't count that. That's a choice being made. The, part of it's for a increase in the level of treatment, the DEP is required, part of it's for additional ledge. When we went from fairly initial, relatively thin design, which is common at that point, to going down the street and pouring a hole everywhere. This is not a trend. We're embarrassed to be back with this number. But it's not the first time it's happened, Gina. Unfortunately, we had a very similar occurrence when we were expanding Town Hall in the 80s, when, as I recall, you were still on the board.
I'm sorry, I recognize the gentleman at the front microphone.
Yes, my name is Gerard Tai Tai, and I live at 6 Potter Drive. I guess I'd like to begin by saying that I'm very supportive of sewer systems here in Acton. I'm here tonight because I found out just last Tuesday that I'm going to butter to, to butter in the sewer system, along with, I guess we received notice Tuesday, along with 179 of my closest friends, that there would be a meeting at the convenience of the town two days later, to air grievances relative to our being put into the sewer district. A lot of us had commitments elsewhere, couldn't make that meeting. And given that the town is asking us to make an invest, not asking us, but telling us to make an investment in the sewer system to the tune of roughly $15,000, plus or minus a couple, that seemed like that was extremely short notice, and I understand the conditions under which this came about, but relatively inconsiderate on the part of the town. I've had a number of discussions with my neighbors about, about this, and our discussions are shaped more around what we don't understand about the sewers than what we do understand. Amongst other things, I guess we're very interested in what the true cost of construction is. In my capacity at work, I've had to have oversight for a number of construction projects. We've gone from an estimate of roughly $10 million, $11 million, last year's, the 1997 town meeting, to somewhere on the order of twice that. Now, I'm familiar with the fact that constructions costs are, it's not like going out and buying a VCR, you can get your hands exactly on how much things cost. But I would argue that something that's 100 percent off is a very poor estimate of construction cost. My concern is that we're not, we haven't seen the end of it. We've yet to put a spade in the ground. And if the big dig is any indication of what can happen once you start construction, I don't think we're anywhere close to understanding what the costs of the sewers are. I guess, in short, that has significant implications for the betterment costs for those who, who are in the sewer district. And also, I guess, what contractual arrangements have been or will be made, okay, to limit the expansion of cost? And if they aren't, who's going to take care of the expansion costs? Is it going to be the community, or those who, quote-unquote, benefit from the sewers? Let's see, I guess, another thing is the operational cost, the yearly cost, that depends on how many people sign up for the sewers. Right there, a lot of, right now, a lot of people are essentially no votes in this process, that are identified as part of the new district. That'll have significant implications for the yearly cost for those of us on the sewer system. Roughly 8 percent of the Acton households are covered under the new district. And we've been suggested that our neighborhood, okay, is not a problem for the groundwater, okay, I'm sorry, for the surface water, and that any concern that they have is relative to the aquifer. I'd like to know how long it's going to take in terms of new construction, to the point where we've nullified essentially any benefits we've gained in the purity of our groundwater from implementing the sewer system. Let's see, I guess the other thing is, personally, I, I don't understand Title 5 yet. I don't know what the implications are for my septic system. I don't know how much a new septic system costs. I've tried to get through some estimates, because I suspect my system's going to fail. There've been a few that failed in the neighborhood. But these are all things, these are all questions that we have. And we really went brought to the table and asked to consider this until last Tuesday. So I have, I have some significant reservations at this point. I guess my input and my thought on this is that the apportionment, we've talked about the benefits... the benefits potentially to schools, to commercial properties. We haven't talked about the cost sharing that really should take place, that addresses that shared benefit. So I suggest that the apportionment, as stated in Article II, is unfair. My inclination would be to table Article II, too. If we did that, I'd certainly be more than willing to vote for Article III, although I'm sure, not sure that we've clearly reflected what the costs are. That's about it. Thanks.
Okay. Did you have some comment regarding that gentleman's questions?
Most of those questions related to Nancy's article, which is next. I would just say that we regretted the short notice when you were added back into the district. You were in it originally, and I think you'd been much more critical and properly so if we hadn't, between September 24th and the date that we held the meeting, tried to organize the meeting, at least talked to you before the meeting, I regret the short notice.
I'll recognize Mr. Fetterman again.
I was to make an amendment, but I'd like to know if this gentleman's motion to table this can be seconded in accordance with what I understood earlier.
He didn't make a motion, sir. I didn't hear that as a motion, sir. If you made a motion, please stand up and make it again. No, go right ahead.
Yes, I'd like, I'd like to suggest that we table, make an amendment, how do you say it?
It's awfully hard for me to tell you what to say if I don't know what it is.
Help me out.
What is it that you would like to do?
What I'd like to do is let, like the board to go back and reflect on what's really fair, so we're, I'd like you to address, to table Article II.
All right.
I think that's really why we got to Mr. Garrett's recommendation.
Let me, let me tell you what your options are.
Sure.
Okay? That isn't one of them. If you wish to make a motion, you can say, "I move to lay Article II on the table." If you say that, it requires a second, it isn't debatable, and it takes a two-thirds vote to pass, if that's what you'd like to do.
Sure.
Then go ahead and do it.
I'd like to make a motion to table Article II.
Go here a second. Moved and seconded. All in favor of tabling Article II, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Motion is lost.
No.
Mr. Fetterman. Now, if we could, Mr. Fetterman is going to make an amendment, I believe. If we could have, order please, thank you very much.
I would like to make an amendment that speaks to the operating and maintenance costs.
Go ahead.
I move that the proposed Section 6 annual user fees...
Excuse me, Mr. Fetterman, do you have this on a slide?
Yeah, I do.
Why don't you put the slide on so that we can see it, please?
I move that proposed Section 6 annual user fees be deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following. The sewer commissioners shall from time to time establish just and equitable annual user charges to cover the cost of maintenance, repairs, and operation of the sewer system. The cost per water unit to be set to a rate that will cover the entire cost of operation, maintenance, and repair of a system operated at the full planned expanded capacity of 850,000 gallons per day. This will be the cost per water unit adjusted for inflation, applied to users during the period from the introduction of the initial 250,000 gallon system until the full planned expanded capacity of 850,000 gallons is online. During this buildup period, the remaining actual costs that offer benefits to the population primarily outside the initial district shall be borne by the town until the expanded 850,000 gallon system is fully built and operational.
Excuse me, that's your amendment.
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Now, Mr. Fetterman, you may make your argument.
Okay. I would like to argue in favor of this on political grounds, not grounds of fairness, and I'll try to do this rapidly. As I see it, the political goals of the town as a whole are to build the initial system, to have people hook up, and to expand rapidly. As I said earlier, and the town leaders have emphasized, the system offers benefits to the town as a whole with the costs borne by a minority. The costs are high. The cost per year, under the most favorable estimates of everybody hooking up, which I don't think anybody expects, is about $1,600 per year. Under less favorable estimates, about $2,300. The implications are, few people will hook up, and there will be political and legal challenges that will ultimately compromise the project and the expansion. So the proposal imposes modest, rapidly declining costs on the town, recognizes benefits to the town as a whole, and allows the realization of all the political goals of the town, not just laying down the initial pipes, but actually having people hook up and actually having the system expand rapidly and serve the whole town.
I'll recognize Mr. Hunter.
We oppose the motion. It has some of the same problems as the last one. We don't know what operating costs of an 850,000 gallon per day system will be. I presume at that point we're in the river, and we don't know what the treatment's going to be in the pipe and what have you. It's an uncertain cost. Basically, again, this is shifting an uncertain cost to the town, and particularly when you start talking about operation and maintenance, I think it's properly borne by the users. I don't recall in the past we've ever discussed throwing any O and M on the tax base. We did discuss that with betterments, and the $1,600 that was quoted is just, is just off the wall. I did note that the lady, I think was from Nagog Woods, talked about that they're paying $400, some up there. Now, we can debate operating cost numbers till we're blue in the face, but the fact is that we, if, if there's a debate over what they're going to be in the district that's designed, consider what they are, what they're going to be in the district we don't even know about, and remember, 850,000 is in itself a speculative number.
Let's see, I'm going to recognize someone in favor of the amendment.
No, I'm against.
Well, the pro microphones are going to be over here, and the con microphones are going to be over here. Oh, isn't that what we've been doing all night long?
No.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it is. It is. Largely, it is. Doesn't matter if I know what you're going to speak to. What you're going to speak to.
The amendment.
I know, but are you, you're...
I'm against.
You're against it. Go right ahead.
All right. My name is Marco Schittl, to Paul Rebe Road. I've been sitting here quietly all night listening to this, and I'm, now my blood is starting to blow, to boil. Mr. Hunter said it very well, but I remember, I remember two years ago, we had all this big discussion about sewers and the users' fee and what have not, and as somebody pointed out before, we fairly voted for the sewage at the time, the users' fees, whatever. And what has happened now is that the expense has gone up. Unfortunately, that happens. But it seems that there is a group of people here that have decided to put, to place us through a Chinese torture by little drop, by little drop. First, it was on Article IV, now it's on Article VI, and I bet next it will be probably Article VII or VIII, and it will be five in the morning, and we'll be still debating how to put here cost associated with a district that doesn't yet exist, there are no real plans yet to have it, and nobody knows how much it's going to cost. I think this is just questioning the town's, town, twice there have been votes, twice they have been voted down, and I think enough is enough. Thank you.
I want somebody now, because obviously, I don't know what microphones are, pro and con. Who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment?
I actually have a question.
You have a question? Well, does anybody wish to speak in favor? All right, then, to your question, ma'am.
Okay. My question is, I'm Helen Probst, I live on Potter Drive, one of the newly re-added, returned to the fold sewer district. Initially, I was thrilled to hear we were on the sewer district. I was really disappointed to hear we were off it. When I heard we were going back on it, I was thrilled again. I'm not thrilled at the cost. I will pay it, and I will connect. My concern, which in some ways plays to this amendment, is that if we do not get a good connect rate, not connect proportion, percentage, whatever, if we only get the 25 percent of failed systems connecting, the user fees are, you know, appropriately borne by the users, like, you know, fully, the town has no part of that, that really puts the fear of, I don't know what in me, I mean, what are we talking about, OFL here? So my point is, is that I think that this might, this amendment might not be the right idea. It's working on, you know, pie-in-the-sky figures, which nobody can really point to. A lot of the reasons for these amendments is we're not dealing with real numbers. I don't really have anything specifically to propose. My question, is there any way to truly encourage, as a town, I mean, we've got to get the connection rate up, so whether there's a connect when we first start and you get half off, I mean, I don't know what it is, but I mean, there's got to be a sale, you know? Let's go for the sale! You know, so my, my concern is, is that if we're trying to sell this, this whole thing with sewers, I mean, we've only been in town five years, but the bottom line, I was here when we, when we voted this squeakily passed, when it was other people's money we were spending essentially by being 100 percent user-funded, is, nobody wants to pay for it. I mean, it's a lot of money. Who wants to pay for sewers? The bottom line is, we need sewers, we have to pay for it. So unlike 10 years ago, when the town was willing to pay for sewers, now the users are paying for sewers. Okay, we're stuck there. That's the way we are. That's where we are today, and that's the way it is, and we don't get any state money. So, we vote for sewers, yes, but let's try to be a little bit nice to our neighbors who have to pay the freight for their sewers, and think about, let's make this something that they want to do, not something that they're going, "Please, don't make me hook up." I mean, this is a lot of money we're talking about, and there ought to be a way to say, this is good for you, not just say, "This is good for the town, this is good for you." It is good for you. It is good for the town. Let's make it so that it doesn't feel like someone's just taking money out of your wallet more than they already are. So my question is, is there any way that we can make the user fees based on a minimum, for example, a minimum connect fee? In other words, no, no less than, I don't know, 75 percent, you know, rate? And if, if that's not covered, then the town will cover that little bit of user fee kind of situation. I don't know. I'm not making a motion, I'm just saying, has any of this been discussed?
Well, I think we should turn to the marketing vice president of the sewer district, Mr. Hunter, and ask him what his thinking has been.
He needs a jingle. This is what we need, we need a jingle.
I don't want jingles about sewers.
Yes, we are sensitive of that. To begin with, we expect 40 percent hookup on day one between the schools and the failed systems, presuming the third amendment that we have coming from these people has not passed, which wants to exempt the failed systems from having to hook up, in effect. We are looking for incentives to hook up. I've mentioned the one that we have already identified, which is getting a cut rate on the physical labor cost to piping in, and if you have any other suggestions, we'd be happy to have worked on it. We have a group of volunteers who continue to work on this, and it is, you're exactly correct, it is in everybody's interest to get as many people hooked up as possible, and that's also, in addition to being a financial goal, that also helps protect the environment, which is why we will oppose a prospective amendment to delete failed systems from having to hook up.
So, just a last point of clarification. What you're saying is, the language of the article as proposed does not negate the possibility of some sort of advantageous deals being made in the future? Or does it negate it?
That's true. It does not, and now, you can't take this to the bank, okay?
Right.
But there is a very sizable contingency built into this number, and depending on how the construction goes, and whether there's money left in the capital budget, without going out to the other taxpayers, it's entirely possible something may work out like that. I'd like to see that, but I certainly can't promise at this point, it's uncertain.
Okay, thank you.
I'll recognize the gentleman at the front who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment. Is that right, sir?
Yes, it is.
Go ahead.
Basically, I'm in favor of this amendment because it's in the town's best interest for as many people as possible to hook up to this sewer system as quickly as possible for environmental reasons and for economic expansion reasons. If, by the town's own numbers, if practically everybody in the district hooks up to this, residents in the first district are still facing a $500 per year operating fee, plus $575 per year betterment, plus the initial hookup, that's a lot of money. That in itself is a lot, but if less than 80 percent of people hook up to this system, that operating fee is going to go through the roof. That by itself is a negative feedback system, and is going to cause even less people to hook up, making the whole project even more uneconomic, which will stop it from being expanded in the future. So admittedly, this, this puts a small amount of money back onto the general tax base, unlike the amendment that was defeated earlier on, and, but I still in favor of this because it's in general benefits of the town to, to get this system up and running with as maximum number of users as possible, as quickly as possible. I fully agree with the selectmen on that point.
Opposed? Yes.
Sandra Whaley, One River Street, in the heart of the sewer district. I move the previous question.
All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. I'm, I'm going to judge that the debate is cut off, because, because even if everybody in the other room voted not to cut off debate, it would be, have passed by a wide margin. And now we will vote on the amendment. I'll ask the other room to vote, too, and what I'd like to do is have the moderator in the other room come in and tell me if they, how the vote went. Was it clearly for or against?
Mr. Moderator, I am hooked up now, and I can tell you directly.
Oh, very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Aronson. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
What do you think, Mr. Aronson?
Just lost by a huge majority, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much. It did in this room, the amendment is lost. We're back discussing the motion unamended. Mr. Cadillac.
Are we still doing pro and co-microphones, or do I go over there? Which one is pro?
Okay, I'm going to try this once more. The pro microphones are these three. One, two, three.
So I got one.
The con microphones are these three.
Oh, good, okay.
You're on.
I fully understand the concern of the people who are in this district about the potential costs, particularly of the betterments. As a matter of fact, it's a subject that's been discussed in great detail, and I don't want to preempt anything that John Prendel would say on the next article, but you will see that there is considerable amount of financial information which confirms that the numbers that are being used are good numbers, and that's really my point. As contrary to many other projects in this town, and I will not elaborate at this meeting, the construction costs of these projects have been meticulously established over the last 18 months. That's precisely why the cost changed, and we can identify just about every $50 of that. I am very comfortable that these numbers are not going higher. Furthermore, we are basically capped at the $21.5 million by virtue of having to go to the state next week, by October 15th, for the zero-interest loan at some fixed number which is not going to go up. This has two, two things happened because of this. One, it effectively caps the cost of the system, and... of the system, and second, it gives essentially a 50 percent break to the original users, the group that will be assessed, the original betterments, as opposed to future users who probably will not get a zero-interest loan, so there is a significant benefit right there. So, for those of you who have been wondering whether this is a good deal, it's probably the best deal that we will see, and the numbers, to repeat at once, are very reliable, and I don't say that very often.
Opposed? Mr. Cady, are you opposed? You wish to speak in opposition?
I wish to speak.
Well, I know you're doing quite often generally, but...
I think all questions and answers have been spoken at least twice tonight, and twice last year, and I move the previous question.
I know, I know, I know what to do, I'm just thinking about it. I'm thinking about it because of the gentleman here wanting to make another amendment, and...
A non-fa...
No, I'm not going to let you make the amendment, though, yet, sir, I'm just telling the town that, that you're standing here waiting to make an amendment that you submitted prior to the meeting, do I hear a second? All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
I'm sorry, sir, debate is cut off. We'll now vote, Mr. Aronson, how was it in the other room?
Same way, sir.
Okay. Now, we will vote on the main motion, it is unamended, under Article 2. It requires a simple majority vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Mr. Aronson, how was it in the other room?
Majority voted aye.
I declare that the motion has carried. The motion under Article 3, could we have order, please? If you're leaving, that's fine, but please do so quietly, thank you very much. The motion under Article 3 is fairly long, do we have it in a slide fashion by any chance?
The motion, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, then I'll just read it. Ms. Tavernier moves that the town appropriate $10 million, $10 million, for the purpose of supplementing the Middle Fort Pond Road, Middle Fort Pond Brook Sewer District appropriation voted under Article 18 of the 1997 Annual Town Meeting, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $10 million and issue bonds or notes, therefore, under Chapter 44 of the General Laws and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws. That the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust, established pursuant to Chapter 29(c), and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust, and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan, and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, and that the town manager is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection, to expend all the funds available for the project, and to take any other action to carry out the project. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Tavernier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I want to thank all of you who have stayed on to participate in this most important vote, and the most important vote in the 14 years that I've been personally involved with this effort. We hope that we can move quickly to the decision point tonight. Contrary to Dory's building, I am not going to give you the detail on the financials, I have someone else much more capable who can do that for you. I do want to put this quote in front of you, though, tonight, we've said it over and over, on September 24th, the DEP official who literally controls the purse strings for the state loan program said to our officials, "You had better get your project in on October 15th, because we are looking to slash them off the list, we are so oversubscribed that we are eliminating projects left and right, and if you miss it by one day, you're out of there." And because it's so oversubscribed, there is no funding anticipated for the next two years. When we last met here, April 1997, on the issue of sewers, I told you of that time of our remarkable sewer action committee, and staff had logged over 4,600 hours of their time between May 95 and April 97. Since that last vote, the same dedicated group of people have logged another 3,000-plus hours, feels like we logged 100 here tonight. Thank you. One of the most dedicated members and hardest-working is John Prenderville, who represents the Act and Finance Committee, and I'd now like to turn over the presentation of the financials to him, thank you.
I also want to thank the members of the Sewer Action Committee Financial Task Force, Herman Kavakov, the selectman, Chuck Olmstead, Sid Johnson, who are members of the Finance Committee, Charlie Cadlec, who is always available and ready to give advice and assistance, and Paul Malady. A little deja vu to start it off, I moved into the town in 1967, and the town at that point had just failed to pass sewer amendments that would have sewed at some point in time all of Acton, probably for a price at that stage of about $5 million. Maybe some of us should have taken more interest at that time, instead of in youth hockey. They did one thing at that, at the 1967 town meeting, though, they bought the Adams Street property, and that property today has turned out to be a valuable asset to us in the town. The construction cost for this project, you've heard, is $21.5 million. I'm going to give you some bullets, just to kind of set the premises for the financial study that we did. The $21.5 million capital cost is going to be completely recovered from a better and/or user revenues, based on the votes we've just heard, over a 20-year period. The uniform flow unit is going to be used to determine the betterment assessments, and Dory referred to a 330-gallon or unit flow indicator, and one betterment flow unit is estimated at this time, for the average three-bedroom house, if you would, to be about $11,582. That, that's down slightly because of the addition of the 180 users. The betterment cost, the capital piece, doesn't move as fast as you'll see in a downward direction with the economies of scale, it was previously estimated to be about $11,800. Not to governmental entities, towns, and school properties are going to reimburse their 14 percent of this $21,500,000 cost through user charges, it has to be done that way. The town and the schools will pay for it that way, they will pay for it over a 20-year period. The school share of the $21.5 million is about 2.9 million at this stage, with this, what I describe as a work in progress, because until the 15th of October, when the engineers take the final documents to the state, you have to expect that the costs may change, albeit not in an upward direction. We've already heard that the administration, operations, and maintenance costs, and they're currently estimated at $621,000, they'll be recovered through user charges. Now, they're, we're going to hear a little bit later, that the cost for the average use, user, residential user in this district will be about $616, was $616, and $1,000 respectively. They're down about 23 percent when we add the 180 users in the district, and I'll give you the numbers a little bit more definitively later on. We've done, from the financial point of view, a simple cash flow analysis based on 50 percent funding from the wastewater pollution abatement trust, that's the money the state will furnish us, that's the best we're ever going to get, you've heard that the, all that's available now in the state is $209 million, we're lined up number five, and many behind us, and there is apparently not going to be any more appropriations for the DEP over the next two years. I hate to say it's a last chance, but that's just about what it amounts to. Now, let's take a look at a question that has come up several times tonight, last May, the cost was $11,500,000, today it's $21,500. And I want to explain simply, and I hope quickly, what the difference is between it. Don't worry about the numbers above that, but basically, 3 million of it, right off the top, is because we added 180 users, we added another three miles of pipe, you will. And by the way, a system goes in, at about a million dollars a pipe mile. The other changes were large changes in the wastewater treatment facility, the original cost of that facility on Adams Street was done by engineers, but it wasn't based on the detailed design information, and certainly not the detailed substrata work that was done by Wooded and Curran to determine where ledge was going to occur, et cetera, and also based on the design requirements for the wastewater treatment that we're going to have to put initially into the ground. We've developed, we'll come out of that plant, but some of us have coined a sparkling effluent, we'll be able to do everything but drink it by the time it gets through this treatment, and it's a requirement. Now, some of the requirements that have been placed on it that make up the difference of about 2.4 million in the wastewater treatment plant are additional sludge removal requirements for a half a million dollars, odor control, what of non-components, when they got into the detailed design of the building that were required. The collection system piece is basically up for the additional piping required with the 180 users, albeit they were added lately, true, but they were added as fast as the information was determined by Wooded and Curran after they negotiated with the state, so I don't think anybody deserves a black mark for that particular case, that was moving at as fast a pace as I've ever seen anybody move. The pumping stations are up about $1 million, if I read my numbers correctly, there are seven pumping stations required, eight pumping stations required in this new design versus four that the prior engineering group came up with, but remember, when you have engineers do things for $25,000, it's a lot different than when you sit down and you put a detailed design group together, like Wooded and Curran, and have them come up with the numbers. Charlie Cadlec made the point, we're comfortable with these numbers, there is a contingency in them, but that has to be reduced to 5 percent by the time we take this information to the state on the 15th of October. Now, the question has come up, how does it split in the absolute amounts for the sewer district betterment assessments? The $21.5 million is going to be paid for by residents and commercial users, 17.9 million is roughly the betterment charge that will be paid for by the residents and the commercial users. The town, the school, and other institutions, like synagogue, churches, the Discovery Museum, will pay their charge for betterment through user charges, that's three and a half, almost 3.6 million dollars, of which I mentioned earlier, the school piece alone is a little under 3 million, about 2.9 million. Those betterment charges that will accrue that way will be paid for along with the user charges. Maintenance, the current estimate for administration, operations, and maintenance are based on a 250-gallon-per-day wastewater treatment plant and collection system is about $621,000, of which, almost $400,000 is for the wastewater treatment plant itself. You might say, why is it so, costs so much to maintain one of these bloody things? Well, when you sit and read and look at what the engineering does to build into a sewer treatment plant, it's as sophisticated as any communication system that I used to be involved with is, it has control devices, it has lots of chemical treatment requirements, and it requires skilled and trained people to run it. The pumping stations require a likewise piece of competence, and the labor content for this whole package is about, I estimated, $330,000 of it is labor. The collection system isn't as sophisticated, that requires people who can clean out pipes. So, that's, that's the charge as we have it today, $621,000. Now, how might that look, that charge look, when it's spread over, or by somebody who's going to have to pay the bill? The usage fees are going to have to be determined by the sewer commissioners, a group that's yet to be formed, based on covering this $621,000, and they're going to have to calculate what the expected usage is per day, per year, in the district. Just look down at the bottom, don't worry about the numbers at the top. Initially, this system will expect, you all who are in the district, including the new 180, will put into the, into the sewer system about 192,000 gallons per day, that's a lot of flushing, a lot of use, but that's based on what you put into the, you get from the water district today. Now, on an annual basis, we caught, we took that and we computed a cost per water unit, and it's about $6.61, it's down 23 percent because of the addition of the 180 users. So, as you put users into the system, the maintenance costs go down at a more rapid rate, they'll bottom out at some point. Now, the average usage in the state of Massachusetts by residents is 120, 100 cubic feet a year. Now, that way, thinking about that, that's 90,000 gallons of usage a year. In this district, the average usage is less than that, it's about 70,000, 76,000 gallons per year. So, if you're, if you build up to the Massachusetts use, your bill will be about $793 a year. If you're the stay-at-your-average, as a residence customer, about $473 a year, which seems to be comparable from the people from Nogard Woods, when they quoted what they're paying in their common charges. Now, let me just close by giving you a brief look at what I'm going to call a draft cash flow, and I have some premises that I have to live with. This is done as a sample only, and it's to portray the potential sources and user uses for the sewer commissioners when they run this business, and we forecasted on this basis, that the betterment charge, in order to obtain initially a means of not going into the red, this assumption, the assumption in this cash flow has in it a 25 percent down payment, and 75 percent of it then is paid over 20 years. That's just for illustrative purposes, in order to show that you are going to require some input at the beginning to obtain the necessary funds to run the district. I made a very optimistic and a conservative look, I said it would take six years to hook up the customers to the water, to the system. On the other hand, I went optimistic and said that it would be 100 percent. Now, I know realistically, that's not going to occur, but I also think that the people who are going to hook up are going to hook up in much less than in six years, so, I expect that, this is not unreasonable from that point of view. Also, in the assumptions, we said the construction expenditures would equal the bond receipts. When the state gives us the money to build the plant, they don't allow us to take the money and put it into a bank and earn interest, we get a dollar, a dollar in goes out, a dollar to the contractor, and the engineering people who are spending the money, that's, that's the way that's going to obtain, so we will not get any interest that way. 50 percent of the construction costs will be paid by the wastewater abatement trust, if we voted in tonight, and if we get in line and get our, our foot in the door on the 15th of October. I assumed in the, in the analysis for cash flow, that the inflation of the O&amp;M charges and the uses would be equal, so I didn't have to take it into account. The inflation, then, is simple. A comment that's come up several times tonight, and I think the town meeting saw this to be... be the game, that if any one subset of users or abudders is afforded a lower usage or a lower betterment charge, then somebody else has to pay it. It's a zero-sums game. Somebody has to pay. And the hundred percent user payment of administration O and M charges seems, from a financial point of view, to be imminently fair. A positive sewer commission account is required to avoid the need for default payments from the general taxpayers and to provide for unforeseen contingencies. We're going to have a sewer district, but people running it and managing it, they have to be able to take care of the pump that breaks, the piece of equipment that goes, they have to be able to move quickly and fix it. They can't come to the town meeting and ask for that, so we have to give them the means we're able to be able to do that. When I put all that together in a simple—and a very, very simple analysis, I'm going to use, without numbers, a—I'll tell you what—how the numbers ran. What I did was take a cash flow—extend this cash flow analysis for total sources, total uses, and put it out over twenty years to see how it would look. And in so doing, if I just take the year two thousand and two as a case in point, at that point, the usage charge will be six-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand. The betterments will be coming in at about eighteen-hundred-and-ninety-six—one million, eight-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars a year, based on a twenty-five percent down and a payment of over twenty years. The bonds at that point will give us three million dollars, will be at the tail end. They'll have total sources of a little over five-and-a-half million dollars. We'll use, at that point in time, four million, six-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars. So we have a net cash flow of eight-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars—eight-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars. We go out to the—and that gives us a sewer account at the end of that year of one million, three-hundred thousand dollars. Go to the year two thousand and four, and the total sources are one million, four-seventy-two. And that is consist of just the funds we get from the usage and the funds we get for people paying their betterments over twenty years. The users—the usage at that point in time will be about one million, seven-hundred thousand a year. So there'll be a negative net cash flow. But because we've built up a positive sewer commission account in the early years, we're able to carry on without having come back to the town or use any default tax payments out to probably eighteen or nineteen years during this flow. This is merely put up for illustration. It gives you a feel that, from the financial point of view, this is a viable project if it's funded correctly, and I think we are on the road to doing that right now. And I would, from the finance task force point of view, we recommended this to the Sewer Action Committee, and the Finance Committee is also recommending that this article be approved. Thank you.
So in conclusion, as we've heard over and over tonight, yes, sewers are expensive, and we're sorry about that, but they will never be any cheaper than they will be tonight. Thank you. And thank you again for staying.
There's no other board, I take it, wishing to speak? Okay, then we'll open it up to the town meeting members. I will dispense with the pro and con microphones at this time, since at this hour I can't remember which is which. And I'll recommend—the—I'll recognize the gentleman at the back. Is it on? Why don't you try another microphone, sir? You don't need to switch what you're going to say because you're going to it.
Steve Lewis, Carlton Drive.
Okay, Steve.
The betterment charges will be based on the capital cost of the system. And the capital cost—I'm going to have a series of like two, three questions that are more or less yes, no. The capital cost estimates are based on getting the zero-interest loan from the state. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. If—and therefore, if the town does not get the zero-interest loan from the state, I would presume therefore that the betterment cost would increase something like fifty to seventy percent from, say, eleven to eighteen thousand?
I presume you're right.
Something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Therefore, what is the town going to do if it does not get the zero-interest loan from the state? What is the—what is the action of the town? Because the way in which the article is worded, the town does have the legal right under the article to go ahead and sell bonds at whatever interest rate is appropriate for the town, and therefore, the sewer district would pay all of those costs plus all of the interest, which would run it way up. So what is the town's action if it does not get the zero-interest loan?
Well, as you point out, we would be given the authority to go ahead with the project with an interest-bearing loan. However, we have no reason to believe that as number-five position on the list, that we won't get that. We have not even discussed that contingency because we don't think that that is a realistic possibility. However, I suspect that the sewer commissioners, who are the Board of Selectmen in conjunction with the Sewer Action Committee, would make the decision whether or not to proceed.
I think we need assurances tonight.
I don't—
I'm going to vote this, that if you do not get the zero-interest loan, and if the costs increase the amount that—we know that they will, that this project will not proceed.
The motion that was read included—I don't know if there was a contingency statement in that, I have forgotten. I know it referred to state and federal funds.
Nancy, when I read—the motion, I do not see a contingency in here.
Okay. I would suggest that—I wouldn't want to step on your toes, Mr. Moderator, that an amendment could be in order to make it contingent on the receipt of the zero percent interest loan.
That—I so moved that amendment.
Ah, nice try, Steve. I'm going to need a little more than ISO move, so if you'd like to come down and work out an amendment with some real words in it, please do. And while you're doing that, we'll take other speakers. Mr. Swenson.
Mr. Moderator, we saw this start out at ten million, and now it's at twenty million. I think we'll be here in another year saying it's forty million. There's no end to this. We don't have state money in hand, we don't have federal money in hand, and we don't have any guarantee of that. I think this is—this is good money after bad.
Mr. Adelman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was standing to—I am standing to encourage support of this warrant article. There were just two comments that were made that I wanted to address very briefly, I know. One is that we're the largest town in the state without sewers, and the other is that people are lamenting somehow that we didn't get sewers ten or fifteen or twenty or thirty years ago. I think I would argue that if we had sewers in the sixties before environmental regulations, before wetland protection, we would look a lot like other towns that were fully sewered twenty and thirty years ago, and we would look a lot—Group Two would look a lot like Group Nine, Group Two-A would look a lot like Natick and Framingham. And I think that these are the right sewers at the right time. We should feel good about voting for it tonight, not something that we should have done before. That's one.
The lady at the back microphone.
Hi, Lisa Brandon from Hemlock Lane. I'd just like to pose a question with regard to the schools, and the sewers representative— or the schools would be a large part of the base for the sewers. Can you talk about what the plan would be for the schools if the sewer does not go through?
The regional school district is under a consent order from DEP to install a sewer treatment plant. They're—they are not in compliance with Title V, and it's been a five-year order, and I believe this is the fifth year. So the schools would have to immediately—the region would have to immediately move to design and construct a sewer treatment plant somewhere on the campus, assuming that there is a discharge location for the capacity that they would need. I think also we could assume that the same standards that would be applied—that are being applied to us could well be applied to the school district.
Okay. Mr. Lewis, I think you have your amendment now.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The following words are to be added to Article Three, and that the town will proceed to implement the project contingent on receiving a zero-interest loan from the state of Massachusetts.
Is that at the end?
Yes, at the end.
May I see that wording, please? Town Council would like to speak in opposition to it. So your amendment—
It hasn't been seconded yet, so let me—
We'll take a second now. If you'd like to speak to it first, go right ahead, I think you probably already have.
Yes, I have—I mean, I think my questions and my conclusions are the argument, really, for this amendment. And basically, it's amendment that says that there's a point where one cannot and should not proceed, and I think that this dramatic increase in the cost to the users of the system, which has not been covered here tonight, would be way out of bounds with what is reasonable and feasible for them to pay.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to ask the town council to make a comment on the amendment at this time.
I almost never speak to the substance of an amendment. And I understand the purpose of this amendment, and I think Ms. Tavernier indicated that the selectmen would probably not go forward if the state assistance were not forthcoming. But there are problems with conditioning this bond authorization in this way. First of all, I'd point out that this does not apply to the earlier bond authorization. It can't. More particularly, the state program is a very complicated program, and although it is described in general as zero-interest-rate loans, the paperwork doesn't always reflect that. And there are possibilities that the town may need the authority to issue its own bonds, which bear a nominal interest rate, and then it will get subsidy payments to the state through another mechanism. I'm just reluctant to condition the formal vote of the town meeting on that. I think it's appropriate for the town to express its reluctance to go forward with this if the state assistance is not forthcoming. And I think the selectmen would, from what Ms. Tavernier said, support that. But I really do not think this conditional vote is—this conditional amendment on the vote is a wise thing to do.
We have several choices, Mr. Lewis, at the moment. We can go ahead and discuss and debate this amendment and vote it up or down. Given the town council's comments, you may choose to withdraw if you're second or withdraws. You may then later propose it if you wish as a non-binding arrangement on the town. What is your pleasure, sir?
I would like to leave the amendment on the table. I would like to see the amendment voted on.
Fine.
I don't believe that we should vote—we should vote this amendment down because it involves complexities. Everything we're doing involves complexities. And I don't want to add more complexities, but I think it's critically important that there be some ceiling on the amount which the users will pay, and this is a—this would be a very, very dramatic increase in that ceiling. So if this is voted down, well, I think—I would like to see it voted on. Thank you.
All right. Any comment on it, on the amendment? Mr. Hunter?
Yes. I've never considered the possibility of going forward without the no-interest loan, and our only reluctance, I think Nancy and I, is we can't speak for the board or the Sewer Action Committee. I would not vote to go forward. I listened to a presentation, though, for a full afternoon in one of the high-powered law firms downtown about how paper was being shuffled to produce this effect, and I am terribly afraid that although I don't think Steve is trying in some subtle way to torpedo the funding here, it is an extremely complex undertaking. I would really implore him to poll the decision-makers, which I believe in this case are the five selectmen that are here, and see if we would go forward in that basis. My vote is no, but I really am concerned that in one of those paper shuffles, a contingency is going to derail the whole thing. And if that does, the whole house of cards collapses.
To your amendment, sir? To the amendment, sir?
Yeah. I'd like to support the amendment. I think for the first time, we just heard from town council that there may be other options other than the zero percent. I think we've been going this entire premise—
Now, let the gentleman finish. Let the gentleman, please.
I didn't like what I heard, and I think the idea of having it where it's based on the zero percent loan, I think, is absolutely what we've all voted on all along, and I think it should be passed.
Mr. Cadillac.
I think there may be a solution to everybody's problem. Mr. Lewis perhaps might withdraw his amendment, offer one that sets a ceiling, his word, which triggered my mind, rather than conditioning the bonds and so forth, simply set and not to exceed expense, including interest, of, pick a number, around twenty-one-and-a-half million. And if that number is set into the motion, then whether we get there by borrowing only half of it with interest or full of it subsidized doesn't matter, and I would defer, of course, to town council whether that makes more sense, but I see that as a potential out from this dilemma.
Mr. Weller.
Simply a suggestion to Mr. Lewis to act as he sees fit.
Sandra Wille—Sandra Wille, One Rivers—One River Street. What I hear is an amendment that if I am reading our town council correctly, as he's spoken very carefully, legalese, you deep-six your chances of getting this money from the state if you add a contingency. I don't want to take that risk. Frankly, the risk I would rather take is that I trust my public officials. They have offered to all of us—to poll them right here, so we can see what they will do if we don't get what we believe we're voting for, the zero-interest loan. I think we should do that and skip this amendment altogether. Thank you.
I'd like to speak in favor of the amendment because I feel that the users, if they—if they get an eighteen thousand or nineteen thousand dollar betterment, that is way out of line, and we need—and we need some means in the legalese to prevent that from happening. An alternative would be a cap on the betterment, which I will make an amendment later on that if this one is defeated. But this is all—this was an alternative. It's purely to get—to not let it go up to eighteen thousand dollars, so I'm in favor of this amendment.
Mr. Ashton.
Mr. Moderator, you may be seeing a new form of voting by the Board of Selectmen tonight, but I would join in with Mr. Hunter and I believe Ms. Tavernier in terms of the sense of the board, in terms of whether we would go ahead with this project if we do not get state funding. I don't think we would. I think you've now heard at least from three members of the board.
The gentleman at the back.
Yes, just a point of clarification for the town council. He's—he's raised some questions about the complexity and therefore—
therefore such an action tonight, such a vote by the council would not have any meaning? Does it have any legal binding quality that they would all vote in favor even unanimously, that they would not go forward?
It would not be legally binding. I would point out that the deadline for this application is October fifteenth, so they don't have very much time to change their mind.
Ms. Tavernier.
And I would just add to that point that we should know whether we've received the money or not by the end of December, I believe, and all five of us will still be in office. So, unlike binding future boards, I think it's a pretty safe bet if, if you've heard from a majority right here, and I think I know where the other two would stand. I think it's a safe bet.
Mr. Kavakov is sitting, but he's going to stand, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We can now make the count officially four. I, I absolutely would not vote to go forward without the zero percent or effectively zero percent state funding support. It would just be too onerous on, on the residents who are to be sued. Would not be my intent to do that at all.
Wait a minute. We got something going here now.
Even I get a shot at this one. And I probably, I probably stand a little bit alone because I, I won't give an unequivocal support of capping this thing. Having been a little closer to how some of the funding goes, town council tried to explain that sometimes it doesn't work the way you think it's going to work. And there could be a one or a two percent interest that then gets returned in the ways of subsidies. But I would certainly take the position that I would not be in favor of any significant change in these numbers. And certainly, I would agree that this is the cap that I think we've all been going for. So, you've got five out of five.
Mr. Lewis. Mr. Lewis.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. In light of that, I believe I would be quite willing to withdraw the amendment.
Which, which one of you gentlemen, just a moment, just a moment. Which one of you gentlemen seconded it down here? You seconded, no, you didn't second the amendment. Did you? You seconded the amendment? Okay. Will you withdraw your second?
I'd be happy to withdraw the second if some sort of alternative amendment could be put in that will achieve the same.
That's why I, we don't have a withdrawal of the second, so we're going to have to vote on it.
Well, let me, let me make my statement this way. I'm willing to withdraw the amendment if the town meeting voices a, an opinion in favor of, of this and acceptance of the, of the selectmen's opinions and beliefs on this matter.
Well-
Just a sense of the meeting.
I, I think what we're going to, I'll take that, but I'm going to take a vote on the amendment. And I'm going to take it now. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
How did we do in the other room?
It lost by a large majority.
Okay. Now, Mr. Lewis, if you would like to phrase a, a resolution, or take a sense of the meeting, put it in words, I'll be glad to entertain it.
I'll write one. Thank you.
I would like to move the warrant article as written.
You, did you move to cut off debate? It was hard for me to tell what you did, but I'll accept that as a motion to cut off debate.
Yes, that's correct.
Do I hear a second?
No.
All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimous. How did we do in the other room?
Same, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. Guys, Sandra, I wish I'd thought of that line. I'm waiting for Mr. Lewis's, I suspect it's a non-binding resolution. Sure you can. You can make a resolution anytime you want. Without the resolution? You're entitled to make a resolution. Okay, we'll vote. We, we certainly can vote. His resolution will come afterward. No, your resolution has to come afterward. It can't come now. This vote requires two-thirds to pass. All are in favor of the motion as originally read, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
I'll tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to, I'm not calling to tell us forward. Don't get worried yet. Through the great powers vested in the moderator, I'm going to ask all opposed in both rooms to please stand, and I will count them. All opposed, please stand. Mr. Aronson, how do you count in the other room?
There are zero opposed in the other room.
Okay, there are twenty. I think there is only one. You may have it, Sandra. There's twenty-one opposed. Okay, what, all in favor, please stand. I count three hundred in favor. What do we have in the other room?
Eighty-seven, Mr. Moderator.
The vote is three hundred and eighty-seven in favor, twenty-one opposed. The motion is carried. Are we going to continue? I, I, I'm going to ask the board of selectmen this. Do you wish to continue, or do you wish to call it a day? Yes. What am I looking at?
Mr. Moderator?
Where are we? The back, yes, Mr. Lewis.
It seems like it may be too late to get a sense of the meeting on the issue raised at this time. Would you agree, or?
No, I, I would not. You can do that if you wish. If you, I'll tell you what, let us just take care of this final piece of business, and then I'll recognize you, sir. Mr. Lewis, go, go right ahead.
I would like to propose that, that the meeting on this issue, that, that there is a sense of the meeting that the project will not proceed unless the project receives a zero-interest loan from the state on otherwise very low-interest loan for this project.
All right, let, let, I think you understand the issue. Mr. Lewis has stated it clearly. This is non-binding. This is a sense of the meeting to give the board of selectmen and other town officials direction. All in favor of Mr. Lewis's proposal, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. How did we do in the other room, Mr. Aronson?
It was unanimous four.
All right, then, then your, your proposal has passed. It is non-binding. It is advisory to the board of selectmen and others. Now, I'll recognize this gentleman.
Ken Sundberg, Henley Road. Ken Sundberg, Henley Road, move to adjourn till tomorrow night, seven p.m., this place.
Ken, just one moment.
Mr. Moderator, point of order.
No, I'm not going to accept the point of order right now until I finish looking up something. I'll be right with you. I just wanted to see if it was a debatable motion. Where's the point of order coming from?
Point of order is coming from up here, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, go right ahead.
Mr. Timler, five forty-sixth Great Elm Way.
Right.
I'm slightly familiar with Robert's rules, but I am totally unfamiliar with the, with the rules on the moderator or the town rules. Suppose a small group of people showed up, if the meeting is adjourned tonight, and proposes the same amount, the same amendments, or reconsideres the amendments that were defeated tonight. Are they allowed to do that? To, after we adjourn tonight, a town bylaw would require them to go to the town clerk, I think it's eight hours prior to the start of town meeting tomorrow night, and file their intention. At town meeting tonight, uh, tomorrow night, three-quarters of the people present would have to vote to reconsider. If three-quarters voted to reconsider any article or any business done tonight that was so identified eight hours prior to the start of town meeting, could be dealt with again. Thank you, sir. I would urge everybody here, because I get a little cynical once in a while, to show up tomorrow night if the meeting is adjourned tonight, because that would be a shame. We've had a full discourse of those amendments. They've been defeated, and I wouldn't like to see a small group come up and be successful at voting those amendments, even if it takes seventy-five percent. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Now, we have, we have a motion on the floor to adjourn. This is a debatable motion. If anyone has any thoughts or questions about it, they can make themselves known. The gentleman at the front.
Dennis Norther, eight and eighteen. I suggest that we just stay and finish the remaining three articles and get on with it.
Okay, I'm not going to spend a lot of time debating this. All in favor of the adjournment motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
The motion is lost. How did we do in the other room, Mr. Aronson?
Same, Mr. Moderator.
You've got plenty of room to come back in here now, if you'd like.
But then I lose control.
Yeah, I know. All right, you can make, you're welcome to stay there, but you're only getting ten dollars for doing this tonight, half of my pay. All right, we'll move on to Article Four. Mrs. Tavernier moves that the selectmen are authorized to petition the general court for an act relative to sewer betterment assessments in the town of Acton substantially as printed in the warrant. Do I hear a second? Mrs. Tavernier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Four is a request for a, a home rule petition so that we can cha-make three separate adjustments to current state law, so that it more matches our plans for the financing-
The dream's always the same. I've had it many times.
The Massachusetts Constitution grants this power to cities and towns themselves that will accomplish certain changes. Town meeting voters are allowed to propose changes or amendments to the current state laws, or even create new laws for ourselves within reason. This special legislation accomplishes the desired changes, assuming the legislature goes along with the proposals, because it does have to go there. The procedure for a home rule petition is that the town meeting will vote in favor of that, hopefully. Then it will be filed as special legislation with our senator and representative. There will be hearings at the State House. There will be a vote by both the House and the Senate. And then the governor will sign it into law when it, and it will take effect immediately. This may take two years to accomplish, but it's, it's worthwhile. The changes that we are requesting in this home rule petition is, first of all, we're asking for the ability to stretch the betterment loan out over thirty years. That law has recently changed on the federal and state level that allows us to bond for sewers for thirty years. Should we choose to do that, this vote would allow you to do that. At the moment, it looks like there would be interest applied to anything over twenty years, so that we have not made that decision yet. The second change would be to ask permission of the legislature to allow us to bill betterments on a quarterly basis, and they would go with the tax bill. Right now, current law only allows semi-annual billing. And the final change would be to allow the current law that requires two percent interest be tacked on to betterments to not apply to Acton. As you've heard, we're getting a zero percent interest loan. There's no reason for us to make a profit off the district owners by tacking on two percent. All this, this home rule petition would do is request authority to simply do the net interest rate in the end. And that's it. Thank you.
Other comment on Article Four? The finance committee have a comment on this. Mr. Penderville?
Finance committee recommends approval of this article.
Comments from anyone, any town meeting member? Seeing nobody standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Five, dealing with a zoning exemption for public sewer facilities. Mr. Ashton moves that the zoning bylaws be amended to set forth in the article. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Ashton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm going to be as quick as I can. Article Five is the last of the sewer-related articles. I guess you could say I'm doing cleanup here. Article Five is a request to exempt the public sewer collection system from the zoning bylaws, specifically by amending section one point four of the bylaws. Section one point four defines the applicability of the zoning bylaws. The proposed sewer constructions consist of a collection system, which is, which is the piping and pump stations built within the street right of way. Under current zoning, the right-of-ways on the streets are covered. There are two exceptions, however. One are the pump stations, which obviously cannot be built in the street, and areas where the collection system must cross rivers. Under the current zoning regulations, the pump station structures would have to meet certain dimensional requirements, such as minimum lot size and setback requirements, as if you were building a house or a garage. In addition, where the sewer collection system crosses a river, the system would have to meet the floodplain and floodway requirements of the zoning bylaws. The reason we are asking for this zoning change is because the pump stations are an integral part of the collection system, and they need to be sited adjacent to the sewer lines themselves. In addition, because of their small size, they do not need to have a minimum lot area as defined by the zoning bylaws. For river crossings, work will be required in the floodplain and floodway areas, which will be consistent with the Rivers Act, and in fact, the Rivers Act requires that sewer projects are not an item this law would control. What are the benefits of the zoning change? It will allow us to design a more effective and efficient pump station structures, and we will save money by reducing service line costs, which connect the lines to the pump stations, and because we will be able to acquire land, smaller parcels of land, and thus save acquisition costs. Total estimated cost savings shown here are in the order of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, although I heard quotes today that were even higher in terms of cost savings. In addition, at the river crossings, this bylaw change will enable the design to be more efficient and cost-effective. There are other protections in the sewer action committee's plan that remain outside the zoning bylaw change, and these are quite important. For example, we will use architectural block design for the pump stations and employ visual screenings of the stations to make them as unobtrusive and visually appealing as possible. We will also seek a better input in terms of these pump stations. At the river crossings, the district must still conform to the Wetlands Act, including the filing of a notice of intent and a public hearing before the conservation committee. It is also important to note what is not covered by this zoning bylaw change, and that is the wastewater treatment plant itself. The plant will still be required to meet minimum zoning requirements of both setback and lot size regulations. This bylaw change only- This bylaw change only covers the collection system itself. So in summary, with approval of this article, we're simply seeking to amend the zoning bylaws by replacing Section 1.4 to exempt the public, public sewer collection system. It'll be more efficient and cost-effective, and I urge you to support this article, as the Board of Selectmen have done, and the Planning Board. Thank you.
Finance Committee, please.
The Finance Committee agrees that this is the most economical way to provide this, um, these pumping stations and crossings. We urge acceptance.
Other comment? Seeing nobody standing, we'll vote. Yes, ma'am? Don't run.
Julia Miles, 138 Prospect Street. Um, you made a couple of comments to the Rivers Protection Act, but there's other wetlands that aren't specifically under the Rivers Protection Act. Does this amendment, does this act, uh, exempt any of those from, uh, Conservation Commission hearings?
No, it would not.
Okay, so it's not just the River Protection Act, then? It's, it's, uh, wetlands protection in general, the Wetland Protection Act in general?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Lady at the front?
Yes, Dorothy Campbell, 34 Robin Street, Acton. I, I live in the floodplain, so I'm fairly familiar with the floodplain regulations. What exactly are you exempting yourself from in terms of compliance with the floodplain?
It's exemption of, I believe it's Section Four, um, point something of the, of the zoning bylaws, which relates specifically to the floodway and floodplain regulations in terms of restrictions on any new construction.
Well, all floodplain can, it can, uh, go before the Board of Appeals, but are you exempting yourself from filling, draining, altering, or whatever, the floodplain?
Yes, go right ahead.
It would not require Board of Appeals, uh, filing. What we're looking at are the river crossings, where the, uh, pipes will go underneath Fort Pond Brook Road, uh, Fort Pond Brook, excuse me. And we would not be, uh, filling in the floodplain. We would be, uh, restoring it to its, um, present, uh, shape. But we would not be required, uh, to go to a hearing with the Board of Appeals.
Well, I understand the water district went, made a river crossing, and they didn't have to exempt themselves from floodplain regulations?
This portion of our, of the protection was not something that we sought necessarily, but by exempting the, uh, pipes and the, uh, pump stations from the zoning regulations in regards to minimum requirements, it was also exempting them from the, uh, floodpl, uh, floodplain requirements, too.
I don't see how that follows. You exempted yourself from the roadway things, but why can't you conform to floodplain regulations?
Mr. Moderator?
We're not saying we're not gonna conform. We will conform.
Well, then why do you need to exempt yourself from the regulation?
Are you rising to a point of order, sir, or what are you rising to?
I was rising to offer assistance. I serve in the Board of Appeals, which would, would have jurisdiction over the regulations concerned.
Would, I think I'll ask this gentleman to comment on your question. Go ahead, sir.
My name's David Black. I'm an alternate member on the Board of Appeals. And in fact, I came here tonight from a Board of Appeals hearing that included a floodplain special permit. Uh, I think the, uh, provision that is most important here is that the, uh, floodplain regulations, um, put limits on the amount of storage you can take out of the floodplain, and they do not allow you to use compensatory storage. Now, I, I believe that some of the, some of the pump stations are gonna turn from the floodplain. And those pump stations are gonna be put on a minimum amount of land. And if we had to enforce the floodplain regulations, all of a sudden, we've got to put back the much larger lot for the, uh, for the, for the pumps, for the, uh, pump station to get the ratio of what we're taking out down to that, down to that two percent requirement. And so you've simply, uh, put, put back that hundred thousand dollars in land acquisition costs that they were trying to avoid by exempting themselves from, uh, from minimum, minimum lot sizes. I think that, that's the major issue. There's a lot of other stuff in there that I assume will simply be done as a matter of course. I mean, regulations require that construction be, be suitably floodproof so that nothing, so nothing goes floating down, down the stream in a hundred-year storm, and things like that.
I'm concerned about the impact on the floodplain by what they can do, and I don't think buying small lots is what we're talking about here.
We are...
If they're exempt from the floodplain regulations, they can fill, dredge, do whatever they want, as if it were not floodplain land. And I live in a floodplain. I know what that means. I fought with the town time and time again about highway construction and road construction.
I think the thing to understand here, uh, is that approving or disapproving this doesn't change the size of the pump stations. So the amount of impact on the floodplain is fixed. What is variable is the amount of land the town has to acquire in order to, in order to offset that.
Exempting them from the floodplain regulation exempts them from overview. If they don't get exempted, they have to come before the Board of Appeals, and someone will overview them. Is that not correct?
That is correct. I would assume that the selectmen will exercise suitable oversight.
Oh. We have floodplain law, so that people cannot just have someone like the selectmen oversight them. I vote you, I vote that we deny approval on exempting them from the floodplain.
Any other comment? All right, this requires a two-thirds vote. I think everybody's back in this room now. Is that correct?
Excuse me, I have a question?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Rosemary Sazwick, Mohawk Drive. I was wondering if any attempt has been made to find uses for the treated wastewater, if it's of a sparkling quality and it's suitable for everything except drinking purposes? Is there a way to recycle the water, to some extent, maybe not a hundred percent, but to some extent to, to reduce the costs overall?
Now, as young as you used to be, Doray, watch it.
I don't know, it's just the stage has gotten higher. The proposal has been made, uh, that the, to take the wastewater, um, from the plant and pipe it back over and put it on the, uh, sandfill around the, uh, public wells. It's that good. Technically, it could be done, but it's felt that that's probably not yet politically acceptable.
Um, in some, uh, ski lodges and, um, other out-of-the-way places, I know that they use wastewater that's been treated to go ahead and continue the cycle of... Has that been considered? Could it be possibly used in the school systems for that purpose? And if not, could it be used for heating, um, you know, systems, et cetera?
You know, actually, actually, that, let, let, let's draw that, answer that question, then we'll draw that to a close, because this is really not on the, uh, article that we're discussing now.
We don't have any such use in mind at the moment.
I was glad that I didn't, uh, hear about the, uh, Hunter bottling plant. I'm not, I'm nervous jumping to that one. Any other comment? Seeing no one standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, say no. Uh, all opposed, please stand. I count three vote, four votes, five votes opposed. Please be seated. Would all in favor, please stand? I count one-hundred. Yes votes, five no votes. The motion is carried. And count quickly. Article Six. And I believe our last article, the other four, being passed by consent. Mister Fredericks moves that the town raise an appropriate a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to be expended by the town manager for the assessment, containment, and removal of hazardous waste from property located at 28 Willow Street, 214 Central Street, pursuant to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 21E, and the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. Do we hear a second? Mister Fredericks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Peter promised to be brief and do the cleanup. Well, I will be brief, and this is a cleanup article. So I will do this literally, and basically, what has happened is we have, uh, taken a property for back taxes, and the property is located, uh, just past the intersection of Willow and Central Street. The property consists basically of a garage, uh, let's see, this, can you, yeah, you can see the outline of the property. It's, actually, it's two, two lots, but it's laid out as one, one piece of property. It consists of a garage, a working garage, plus five bays of a garage. And if you can read some of the fine print, you will see that there's a gas storage tank and an oil storage tank. So what we've done is a preliminary study, which, if everybody wants details of it, I have it right here. The bottom line is that we need to do an environmental cleanup before we can sell the property. There's an option of not doing it and selling the property the way it is, but we have uncovered in the study that we actually have a plume of some, of a leak from the gasoline into the water supply, which is now contaminating, uh, neighboring sites. So we feel that the town should not be remiss in its duty to, um, uh, do its own environmental cleanup. The estimates that we've got from the consultants range from sixty to ninety thousand dollars. The hundred and twenty-five thousand is simply to cover it, and unused funds will be turned back to the town. The selectmen recommend this article.
Any other credit?
We do, too.
Any other comment? The gentleman at the front?
My name's Joe Colentro, Grissmill Road. Mister Murray, thank you very much for, uh, filling me in today when I called you. I do have one question, though. I would hope the town would seek to recover funds under 21E from the original owner of this property, even though you're foreclosure. He is still responsible, he or she, or they are still responsible. And I would assume the town is going to seek to recover funding. Forget about selling the property. Recovering funding for not only the back taxes, but recover funding for the cleanup. Is that true?
Uh, this article does not preclude that we take that action, but the action will be basically decided on what we think are chances of collecting versus the cost of trying to collect it. Uh, we're looking now at, uh, sixty-five thousand in back taxes and possibly seventy-five or eighty-five thousand to clean it up. We think we can sell the property for somewhere in the hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. Uh, if you start litigating, as you know, you can get to twenty or thirty or forty thousand dollars very quickly. So we will take the most prudent action, believe me.
All right, that, that raises another question, then. And I think we should be concerned about precedent-setting now. Is this a way somebody can get away from cleaning up their property? I've been involved, uh, as a consultant in several 21Es, and I've seen estimates go from three hundred thousand to over a million dollars. My concern is, if you read 21E, and unfortunately, I haven't read it for the last, if there's any amendments, but the, um, owner of the property is responsible, whether they file bankruptcy or whether they die. You can still go after them, and my concern is that we may not recover our money, and we may have someone do the same thing five years from now or next year. So I, I am concerned. I'm for this article. I wanna get it cleaned up. And I, and I know the site you're talking about, it is unsightly, and I'm glad we're gonna take some action. But my concern is that we're setting a precedence, and we should at least make somebody feel the pain, other than the town. So that's, that's my only concern.
Well, I I agree in premise with what you're saying, but if a person is deceased or bankrupt, it makes a big difference, because there's no real sense in going after somebody that's bankrupt and has no assets.
I disagree, and if a person's deceased, you go after the state, because I handle one of those.
Well, that's true.
So, so there is a way to go after them. They just can't walk away from their, their responsibilities.
We would, we would...
In fifteen years, is an awful long time to do a foreclosure. I think it should've been done a long time ago.
Well, some of that isn't covered by this article.
The gentleman at the back?
Hello, my name is Tom Epperali, and I, uh, live at 21 Willow, across the street from this property that we're talking about. I'd just like to ask for your support in this measure. It's, uh, it's a terrible property to live across the street from, and it's surrounded on all sides by residential properties, and, uh, we very much like it cleaned up, and also eventually like it zoned residential. Thank you.
Other comments? I see nobody standing. We'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Excuse me, can I say?
Opposed, say no. Motion is carried unanimously. I'll take now a motion to dissolve the meeting.
Mr. Moderator, I move to dissolve the meeting.
Second? All in favor of dissolving the meeting, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, say no. Meeting's dissolved. Thank you very much.